One thirty, we'll go ahead and get started with the meeting. Stand for prayer, five lines of prayer, please. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you for your blessings. And we thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of our county. We pray that you will guide us today as we make decisions to benefit everyone. And we thank you for all that you're doing to bless our county. We ask you to continue to do so, in your Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for agenda business. First item is public comment. Do we have anyone with a public comment?
Mr. Tobias.
All right, Mr. Tobias?
Yeah, I mainly came here to ask Rob the question, but since I'm here, I just wanted to make a public comment. I don't really personally like coming into this town, but I just, like I said, I came to see Rob, and I personally can't stand the majority of the people in this county. But they probably can't stand me either, so I really don't care. But really, what I'd like to talk about again is the cams. I mean, you see all over the country about the cams. You see even down in Charleston, down in Charleston, West Virginia, they're even doing what they're even going to do with the cams. They're even going to start doing away with the shotguns. And they're even going to upgrade their tasers and do away with the handguns. Not do away with them, but upgrade their tasers to higher level of tasers so they can do away with using of the handguns. My main thing was really the cams. I just, I'm just tore up over what happened with that charge on me. I got a real bad charge on me, and I didn't deserve it. And the guy wrote up the report wrong. And then the people in that magistrate, the prosecutor had prosecuted them two people over there at that courtroom, them two people sitting on a bench. I don't know how them three people even dish out any law in this county, because they shouldn't even be on the bench or be in charge of prosecuting officers after the will phone problem. So, I mean, and that magistrate, I don't know even how some of them people were over there. So, I know all about the rule of law not only in this county, but in this state. My family got shit on both ways. And I just, I just really feel that these cams, I mean, they could be afforded. I mean, they could get them. There's more enough money out there for these cams than for these officers. I mean, first, it was nobody was on board. Now, Rob said he's on board. Then now, there's no money because they got depleted money. Well, I mean, the way that I've been in Randolph County for, I don't know, twenty-one years, twenty-two years, I've got to give credit where credit's due. At least Mr. Scott took my phone calls and returned them. And at least Rob talked to me and even returned my call. So, I've got to give you guys credit for that. Besides the rest of the people in the past, that's why you guys ain't got no money because they're a bunch of crooks. They done took it all. And these businesses, they get way too many tax breaks. And I mean, these businesses could be taxed and get some money for these people. And I hate seeing people coming in here having to beg for money for things when there could be plenty of money for people to do stuff in the community. And, I mean, as far as some of these people in the community, they don't deserve nothing for what they did to my family. But anyways, my main objective was the cams. And I, I just really think they're essential. I just really think they're a part of law enforcement. And like I said, I grew up across from the police station. I never had no trouble with police officers. I never had any trouble until I came to this state. And I never had no trouble with the law growing up or nothing. I lived across from the police station. These cops came to my house, there was four of them, four cops and an ambulance. Now, they talk about they ain't got no money. I mean, what does it take four cops and an ambulance to come take care of a guy in a wheelchair? And it, it was, it was over nothing. It was over people that deserved what they got because of what they did to my family. But, I mean, that's the reason I came because if the cams were there, I would have some. But I still have some because I got four witnesses of the one guy that lied. And then I got blocked in a corner by a bunch of crooks over there at that magistrate, in that courthouse, and that prosecutor office. I don't care if they don't like what I got to say or they're going to do whatever. They do whatever. I, they don't scare, nobody in this county is scared. And they stuck me down in jail. Then they got a big mouth down at that jail, Brian Landham. He's a big mouth. As long as he's behind them borders down there, he's all mouth. You know, I called and got ahold of him, and he told me to what for. I didn't even know who he was. Says everybody around here got a big mouth unless your name, last name's Gainer, or Ross, or Rossi. Then they don't got a big mouth. But, I mean, I took up my time. I appreciate the guys' time. I appreciate you returning my calls, Mark. I appreciate Rob returning my calls. At least you guys did that, and I appreciate that. And you guys have a nice day.
All right, anybody else with a public comment?
No one else.
All right. Minutes from previous meeting?
I make a motion we approve the minutes from the May twentieth meeting of the County Commission.
All right, motion for approval, approve the minutes of the May meeting of the County Commission as presented. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify that say aye.
Aye.
Do you oppose? Or should carries? All right. Reports. Sheriff, do you have anything today?
Um, no, not really. Just have that grant that we're, you guys are going to look at later, potentially to approve, and we have to have it in the bottom. If you guys see, you pull it with. And we also got the new cruiser back for the K-9. And it is a top-notch piece of equipment. We want to thank you guys for the opportunity in giving us that vehicle. A lot of public response, and it's really, really outfitted. If you get a chance, you need to have Tyler show you what all it does and how it works. And it's a top of the line.
I ran, ran to Tyler a couple of weeks ago. He had said, we've already seen some positive results from him and the dogs.
The dog is very active, let's just put it that way. And we've, we've had positive results with, with him. The vehicle has what's called a pop door. And if the deputy's in a bind, he can hit the, hit the fob on his, on his belt, and it will, it instantly opens the door. It scared the dog when we first put him in there. He wasn't sure what was happening. So, he's have to, he's acclimated to the equipment now, and things are good. It's not something you always do to let him out, but in an emergency where the deputy would be down or being injured or threatened, he could hit that button and let that dog out immediately. So, the thing calls nine-one-one if it gets too warm inside the car. It's, it is a first-class piece of equipment, so we appreciate it.
Good. Interim should do a little story on it.
I think he's been waiting for the, for the vehicle to come in. We talked about it, so I'd like the public to be able to know exactly what's out there and what the money's being used for.
About that for the dog.
Yeah. As long as he doesn't hit the command, he's great.
Um, I apologize, I wasn't here last month. I was on the beach, so, sorry.
That's no excuse.
I could have zoomed in.
You could have phoned in.
Well, maybe I should. So, this is an updated report on how we're doing. I will be at the next meeting. We did, and I've talked with Brooke, we did get our grant. The governor gave us a hundred thousand dollar grant. So, I'm on the agenda next time to approve all the paperwork for the grant. So, they wanted it on the fourteenth, but I sent an email and I knew that the meeting was not till the seventeenth, and they said that was fine.
Had the same award as we received?
Yeah, we've had that, we've gotten that amount for the past three years. So, yeah, it's the same amount, which I'm glad. Glad it's the same and not less, so, but, well, that next time. So, the report I've given you is an updated report of currently with community corrections. So, we currently have a hundred and eleven individuals on the program. From the beginning of the fiscal year, we've had forty-two full participants, a hundred and eighty-nine condition of bond, forty-six services, twenty-four from parole, one check-in into direct screens, and twelve from probation. We have had a hundred and five completed the program. And I'm really excited, if you've looked in the past few years, our completion has never been higher than our termination. And this year, we have flip-flopped. So, we have had a hundred and five individuals complete the program. We've had eighty-six terminate from the program. But we have had thirteen re-enter back into the program. I've had four individuals attend a rehab. We have completed three thousand seven hundred and sixty community service hours. We've completed thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty employment hours. I've had ten out of twenty individuals complete my domestic violence program. We've administered two thousand one hundred and fifty-seven direct screens of just the participants on the program. Of those, four hundred and eighty were positive, which gives us one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven negatives. With the community service hours, we've saved the county thirty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. We have collected twenty-one thousand two hundred and ten dollars in fees. We have, with the regional jail bill, we've saved the county one million seven hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. So, with the community service savings in the regional jail, we've saved the county one million eight hundred and nine, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. I'm hoping by the end of the month, we will beat last year. It'll be close, so, but we'll see. So, of the hundred and eleven individuals that we currently have on the program, twenty are full corrections, fifty-four on bond, eighteen services, nine from probation, and ten from parole. And of our twenty full participants, we've got fourteen employed, one unemployed, three on the run, one on disability, and one in rehab, which gives us our twenty. The last page is our finances. So, with our expenses not including the grant, with community corrections, we've spent forty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-five cents. With federal probation, we've spent ten thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. With direct court, we've spent forty-four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. With DHHR, we've spent one hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and forty dollars and forty-nine cents. Juvenile scram was a hundred and thirty-one seventy-five. And with parole, we've spent two hundred and forty dollars. So, the total expenses minus the grant were two hundred and thirteen thousand forty-six dollars and nineteen cents. With the revenue coming in, we've brought in, as I said, with our community corrections fees, we've brought in twenty-one thousand two hundred and ten dollars. Federal probation, we've brought in twenty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. With direct court, we've brought in forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. I will say, we finally got that September check. I don't know exactly what happened, but I finally got it last month. So, we're just like one month behind with, with direct court. With DHHR, we've brought in two hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, but that does not include the last three, four months. So, we should be seeing those checks coming in soon. And with parole, we've brought in two thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. So, the total revenue coming in was three hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So, with the expenses, with the revenue, we've put in the bank a hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-one cents.
Any questions?
Clark Martin got ahold of you, have you talked to Clark Martin?
No.
When Randall kind of saw the waste for you, okay. He's been trying to get ahold of you, he wants to see if you all have any volunteers to help with the electronics recycling.
Okay, um, no, you're welcome.
Next Saturday.
Okay.
He just needs somebody, what they do, people pour up in their vehicle with their electronics, and he needs someone to help take them out of the vehicle and just put them in the truck.
Do you know what time?
From nine to one.
Next Saturday, the twelfth?
The twelfth. Now, for Phil Gainer Event Center.
I'll see what I can do. I'll even talk with direct court and family treatment court and see if we can get some people.
Okay.
Because they bring some big old TVs.
Some, yes, and I bring a big old console TV. Takes two people, maybe three.
I'll see what I can do.
All right, Aaron, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hannah, you have anything for us today?
Just listed.
Okay. Cindy?
I have, my afternoon shift supervisor has COVID. He is symptomatic with it. And he actually has a new symptom. He's covered from head to toe with welts, and he's pretty miserable right now. His wife is extremely pregnant, so I'm hoping that she doesn't get it. I've got two in weapons training, so needless to say, we're a little shorthanded. So, everybody is chipped in, moves shifts around, whatnot, so we can keep the overtime down as much as possible. So, Ellen, that's about it.
All right. Really?
Nothing.
Okay, did I get everybody?
I'm embarrassed, you know, I mean.
Pam, do you have anything for us?
Actually, I will. We were pleased to announce that we hired an executive secretary yesterday. So, she'll be starting next week. So, maybe I can actually start attending meetings on time, which will be a plus. So, maybe be organized. Secondly, we have our task force that we've stood up regarding addiction, homelessness, and mental health. And at your next meeting, I think Dave Parker, one of our council members, would like to present to you about what we're doing, just for your awareness. We're in our initial stages right now where we're starting doing our tech finding to find out what resources are currently out there and to find out what gaps are out there so we can start addressing those. But Rob's been part of the task force, so I'd like to get you guys up to speed on that if you're comfortable adding that to your agenda. And lastly, we're trying to identify where we're going to spend our ARP money, obviously. And I wish I could have mentioned this earlier. We're actually possibly looking at body cams and dash cams because evidence is part of that. And if you do a deep dive in some of the stuff in there, we're possibly going to be able to do it for evidence purposes for that, for COVID. So, and make a link there. So, I don't know if you guys are looking to collaborate on any efforts like that to save us money or to save you money. In the end, we can look at that and talk about it. If there's room for collaboration, we'd like to talk to you guys about that. But like I said, the body cams are something we're definitely looking at. Travis and I have talked about it, talked to Rob about it. With everything that's on the world right now, it's probably going to eventually become a federal mandate. So, we're trying to get ahead of the curve before the demand and the price skyrocket, which is why we're going out roughly. So, that's all we're going to have to do.
Well, I've asked you guys for permission to let Peggy look at a grant that's available now, too. So, we're, I mean, on public comment, we don't generally talk back.
Right, I understand.
So, I didn't address him, but that, that is something we're looking at. And the grants, she's reviewing a grant now, the application, to see what we can do.
Yeah, as you, I'm sure, know, Jerry, the big expense is the expense of keeping.
Absolutely. Well, it's actually the storage and the retrieval is what it is. Well, I like to do, I got a conversation with you guys about possibly standing up a, a community cloud, a government cloud, where if you partitioned off, you guys would have half of the interstate, and I'd have the other half to save the cost there. And that way, it's not in a private cloud where you have sensitive information in there. I have experience with this, with what I've done in the past, obviously. So, it's a conversation I like to have with you guys.
All right.
Very good, sure.
We've bounced these ideas off each other. Jerry's got a great idea with it. If, if it's something, you got to have to approve it, but I think it would be, keep the costs way down because we're going to have our own cloud.
Yeah.
And he's got the resources to reach out, potentially have that, help us with that.
The leak that we're, we're now using, that was brought to you by us, or brought to us by you. So, you know, we've been able to utilize a, something we never would have been able to create on our own or been able to duplicate, replicate, so we appreciate it. And that's a great idea. Didn't know that was available as far as that.
Very interesting.
Well, a lot of the companies, I know they like to use a commercial cloud, and that's just something I'm not comfortable with. And I know that they're vetted companies, and this is what they do. However, there's still potential for leaks there. And, you know, it's law, law enforcement sensitive data is what it comes down to. So, you have to be very careful how you handle it. You know, so it's getting your people trained up on how to retrieve and use whatever you need to. The benefit that we see for that is it, it actually protects our citizens as well as our officers. But if citizens are going to come in and make false reports against our officers and we can pull that video and prove that did not happen, we can outcharge them. So, it's going to put an end to some of this.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's a huge benefit for us.
All right. And what was, what was the name of the, the task force you guys were putting?
We're just calling it our task, our addiction task force right now. We don't have an official name for it yet. It's an addiction and homelessness task force at this point. So, we've been working closely with Mon County. They have something similar. They're doing fantastic and very fulfilling. As a matter of fact, I'm going there next Friday to meet with them again. We're not going to reinvent the wheel. They're giving us our playbook, basically, to go along. So, right now, it's not going to fit us completely because they have resources that we currently don't. But at the end of the day, when you have somebody who's looking to, you know, turn their life around and make changes, a lot of it is taking them outside of their current environment. So, we're looking at a county swap, if you will. Somebody wants to do better, we can swap, you know, with Mon County, and even Marion County is going to be involved. So, actually, maybe a tri-county swap in the near future. But right now, we have to establish some facilities here to be able to offer some assistance and extended maintenance.
Yeah.
So, we don't have that currently.
Have you all looked at, yet looked at the, these emergency response teams that, that go and respond after a person? I know Jennifer's with the County Commission Association. She's familiar with what they've done down in Campbell County, in the Huntington area. They've had huge success with this program where they go in when a person has a overdose, they have a team that goes in that provides resources, information to them. And they have really been able to help the people not re-overdosing.
So, that's called a quick response team, a QRT, and that's what we're looking at. That's the model that we're actually looking at right now. I have a standing call every Friday morning at nine o'clock with Mon County to kind of get updates on where they are. And so, I can share that information with you guys. I'm sure they've been sitting on my resume calls to kind of find out what they, what they're doing and where they're going with it. We actually have support from the U.S. Attorney's Office out of the building. I have a contact up there, Stacy Bishop, and she's willing to come down to show that she supports us whenever we make this up to the public. So, we're going to open this up in the future for public input, making way in, and let them know that they want to be involved. There's going to be a place for them on the task force to help out, so.
We'll, we'll look forward to having David come. Let him know, we'd love to have him come for our next meeting where he can give us an update.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, Mary.
Just one thing, on the cloud. We have Cisco Switch installed in our new building. If you talk to our IT people, there might be a way that you guys could just use that. I mean, it's so secure. If you want in it, we don't have to call and have them open it up for you. Or if they came to the building, you guys could use it in the parking lot.
It takes a lot, a lot, a lot of space.
And, and we actually have, we don't buy our internet off of, we're actually a vendor, basically. I mean, we could actually sell it out if we, if we had to. But that's what we had to have. So, if it's something you guys could use, I can say we sold it.
Well, it's a possibility, I said. We have to see how much storage space they have there. We would actually have to be in the building. We can run fiber and make that happen and secure that. So, I mean, we'd run fiber and make that secure, just encrypted in the end is all you'd have to do there. But we partitioned it all so that Rob would have his side, and then Travis would have his side, but you'd have a partition so that that stays separated. But we'd also want to minimize redundancy in case the system would have a crash.
Yeah, we've got many.
Okay.
All right. Let's see, anyone else for reports? Okay, correspondence, any correspondence? All right, announcements, our next meeting will be the seventeenth here at the courthouse, annexed at one thirty for a regular meeting. Any other announcements? All right, items for discussion and action. First is an informational presentation from the West Virginia County Commissioner Association. We have Jennifer Piercy, the exec director, with us today. We're so glad to have you. So, before, tell us about the legislative session, if you would, Jennifer.
Oh, it was great. It's fantastic. Actually, what was going to be legislative, I'm actually going to talk about ARP a little bit, too. And then I'll touch on the per diem issue, which came up over the weekend. And I'm going to give a copy, if you don't already have one. This was our final legislative lineup that just gives some basics. It's kind of a summary document. And I'm just going to touch on some of the bigger issues that came out of session. What we do every year is our association meets, and we take suggestions on legislative agenda items. Then we have a legislative committee that meets. They take everything into consideration, and then they make recommendations to our board. The board adopts it, and then that becomes our legislative agenda. We normally have three big items that the association as a whole agrees on. And then, from time to time, we'll have various items that might be particular to just one county, but it's something that we would all support for that county if it will make things better for them. So, this year, our three main items were, we supported legislation that would enact a local one percent county sales tax. And we supported legislation that would allow for a portion of county publications and newspapers to be provided via a website. And then we supported legislation to eliminate the property rollback tax calculation. So, out of these three, the one percent county sales tax, that's been on our agenda for the past few years. It is permissive in nature, so that means, as a county, you don't have to do it if you don't want to because in some counties, it wouldn't make that much of a difference, but in some counties, it would. So, this year, it actually passed the Senate. The House did not take it up. It did at one point get amended into HJR three, which I'll talk about that here in a minute. But that was eventually amended back out. There has been discussion that the one percent county sales tax will be part of a more broader tax discussion. You know, the, the session runs sixty days. Right around day forty was when the governor introduced his, he, he reduced his proposal to eliminate the personal income tax. That basically took over everything the last twenty days of session. There's been discussion that there still might be a special session. Interims are, they start this coming Sunday, and they run through Tuesday, which I will say that today, it was announced, they have called for a special session on Monday. They are going to do some appropriations to DHHR, and then they are supposed to be taking monies and appropriating those towards paving and more road patching. I think they said it was about a hundred million, I believe. So, that will be something that's, that's coming up pretty soon. There are not any interim meetings in July or August. Those will pick back up again in September. So, so the one percent county sales tax, it's still hanging out there. We noticed that during session this year, there seemed to be a lot of legislation that was geared towards the powers of local government. There were, there was a lot of legislation introduced specifically. It, it went after municipalities mainly. Municipalities have the ability of home rule, which means they can tax, they can do user fees, things of that nature. And there's been a lot of questioning about that. So, we're curious to see where that's going to go. Most of those bills, well, actually, none of those bills made the light of day simply because there were other issues at hand with that. The second priority was the, it was legislation that would allow for a portion of county publications and newspapers to be provided via a website. Last year, during the 2020 session, there was an interim legislative report that was presented, and it had to do with costs associated with advertising for state and local government. And at that time, there was a bill introduced, and what they wanted to do was they wanted to have the state auditor's office build a website. Now, this would not completely eliminate advertising costs in your local newspaper, but it would, it could help reduce some of those costs. You would have to run your ad on the website, and it's just, it was just for certain types, certain classes of these advertisements. And they, they were going to do a phase in. It was going to be over three years. What ended up happening was the bill died. However, this year, there was legislation passed, but it just affects state advertising. In terms of local government, this is now going to be an interim study because I think that they want to look at maybe different ways. The biggest issue is, no one wants to bankrupt your local newspapers and publications. However, there are some issues in some counties, and they want to look at those advertising issues, and they want to come up with a more comprehensive plan that would work for all of the stakeholders. Finally, the property rollback tax, the property rollback tax calculation. Never said that correctly. Basically, what this would do is it would eliminate a section of code that requires a reduction in the regular current expense levy rate when the appraisal of a property value results in a tax increase of more than one hundred and three percent of the prior year projected property tax revenues. This is something else that we focused on for the past few years. And I know that especially there are counties in the eastern panhandle that this affects quite a bit. So, this is something that's probably going to be looked at again for this next year. Some other bills of interest. And just so you all know, there were over two thousand bills introduced. Two hundred and forty-two of them completed the legislative process, which was about a fourteen percent rate of passage. There were eighty-seven bills introduced by Governor Justice. Twenty-five of those were passed. There were two hundred and eighty bills that were actually sent by the governor. One bill, only one bill during session was vetoed, and it actually was a technical error that they were able to fix, and it was sent back, and it ended up passed. So, there was nothing that was vetoed this session, technically. There were two bills that became law without the governor's signature. HJR three, which was probably the biggest piece of legislation that affects county... HJR three, which was probably the biggest piece of legislation that affects counties, came out. And what this does, since it's a joint resolution, it could not be vetoed by the governor's office. What will happen is on the November 2022 ballot, what's going to appear is language so that the citizens of West Virginia are going to be allowed to vote yes or no on opening up the section of code that deals with personal and property taxes. And if it passes, what will happen is a future legislature is going to have the ability to go in and amend that code. They could eliminate taxes. They could redefine. There's a lot of different actions that could happen. There's really nothing set in stone. This first step is it just simply gives the citizens of West Virginia the ability to go in and vote. The argument that we heard during session was, don't you want to allow your citizens to vote on this and have a say? Which absolutely we do, but we also absolutely want these citizens to be educated on exactly what they're voting for. And they need to understand what property taxes pay for, where their taxes go, all the essential services that are funded. So one thing that we are looking at doing is we're going to work on a pretty big public education campaign. We are going to partner with the Association of Counties and the Municipal League to do this. We have a lot of concerns about what that's going to look like on a ballot because of course, an average person would look and say, I don't have to pay the taxes on my vehicle anymore. This is awesome. Of course, I'm going to vote for it. But during, in the meantime, they're not going to exactly know what happens with those tax dollars. So we want to make sure we can do that. We have also, we, we spoke with the Secretary of State's office and we've spoken with our accountants to make sure that we can legally do this as an association. And we have received word from the Secretary of State's office that we can do this as long as it's for a public education campaign on an issue. We, you know, obviously can't use any dollars to go against candidates or anything like that. So that's something that we're going to be working on. It'll probably be a big focus of the annual meeting in July, which will be at Main Valley, which is a pretty close by. And that's, that's July 25th through 27th. But that's, that's one of, that was probably the biggest issue that came out of legislative session for us. A few other bills, Senate Bill 12, which was the local health department bill, which now appointing authorities to health departments now have to approve rules that are put in place by your local health department. This bill was effective yesterday and we have asked several times from some groups that work with the local health departments if there has been any guidance provided on how the process will work. Because health departments meet at different times, rules have to be approved within 30 days by the appointing authorities. One major issue with this legislation is that if you have a city and a county who both appoint to that board, city might say yes to the rule, county might say no. So you might in certain areas have a rule in place that is observed or not observed depending on where you are. So that's something that I think is going to be looked at very carefully moving forward. There were also some questions about the liability issue that this would place on commissioners. We did some work with our attorney and there is some language that provides a safety net for elected officials in terms of things like this. So we don't think that's going to be a problem. Senate Bill 42, which I think Commissioner Scott probably has a vested interest in, that's that zombie property remediation act, which it authorizes a municipality to commence a proceeding in a court in a county in which an abandoned property is located. This has to do with a lot of zombie properties that are sitting out there. I know in other counties, it's a huge issue. It's a huge public safety issue when you have people who maybe live in those houses. There could be some illegal activity going on, things of that nature. So we are hopeful that this is going to assist municipalities and counties across the state with addressing these. There were three valuation bills that came out during session. One had to do with the definition of real property. One was coal, one was oil and gas. The main one was the oil and gas bill, which was 2581. And the main issue that we had with that bill, we were able, the assessors did an absolute fantastic job, which you all in this county have a great assessor, Phyllis. She's wonderful. 2581, what it does, it has two parts to it. Number one, it's, it's going to change how state tax will derive the value of gas produced. But then the second thing that it's going to do is it changes the tax assessment appeals process for both residences and businesses who seek to challenge their property tax assessment by the county assessor. They are still working on, it creates this, it's called the OTA, the Office of Tax Appeals. They are still working on how this is going to be formed and how it's going to operate. They were, the assessors were able to get some headway with this, with this legislation because we were told at the beginning that there were meetings with stakeholders over the past two years. It became pretty obvious that counties were not involved, assessors were not involved. And all of the discussions that had to go on, it was primarily industry. And we did take issue with that. So the assessors were able to go in and with every, with all of the definitions and things that are associated with this bill, the assessors should have a voice and they will be able to speak to a lot of it and have input. There's going to be a lot of conversations held with the state tax department. So we will see how this progresses in the future. There were a couple of bills that had to do with property, hotel motel taxes. Senate Bill 270, that is the Airbnb bill, that had to do with being able to collect hotel motel from Airbnbs. These places that are rented like through marketplace facilitators. That was a big issue in some counties. I know it's a big issue here in Tucker, Greenbrier, where you have a lot of people coming in and no one was paying taxes. So that was a big one. House Bill 2823, this relates to exempting buildings or structures that are utilized primarily for agricultural purposes from provisions of the state building and state fire code. It exempts buildings or structures used for agricultural purposes from any county or municipal building code or ordinance that is adopted or may be adopted. And there is a definition included in that legislation of what agricultural purposes means. And it includes, you know, crops, livestock, if you're raising, if it's cultivation, if you're drying, if you're storing machinery or equipment, anything that's in support of agricultural production. And House Bill 2002, which is the broadband bill. What that bill does, it updated speed and standards in some areas. It clarified some powers and duties of the Broadband Enhancement Council. Defined some things in terms of what's called digital equity and inclusion. And it expanded some efforts of the actual broadband council and then it included a lot of information about mapping. There's a huge issue in West Virginia right now with mapping that's accurate in terms of who exactly does and does not have broadband. And this is very key, especially with ARP monies that are coming in because there are certain guidelines that are attached to that in terms of where you can and cannot invest in broadband. So this piece of this legislation is supposed to really help with that, with that mapping part of that. And I think unless you all have any specific questions about this, you can ask away.
We appreciate the work that you all did with the zombie bill. That was, as you know, something that was brought to me by the city initially. And we looked into it. I mean, it took 18 months to deal with the distressed property and it was just too long. So the bill passed was, is going to make it.
And it actually came, like, we were very grateful, grateful for Campbell County because that's where it originated from, because they have such an issue down there. And a lot of it has to do with, I think, housing in relationship to Marshall, where you've got a lot of old houses that haven't been fixed up. So they were able to get a lot of that done. We did send out, we are taking nominations right now for legislative issues. We will be putting together the legislative agenda in July at the annual meeting. So, and one thing I wanted to touch on, and I know this kind of happened over the weekend. There was a story in the Gazette. It was actually on the front page of the paper because I was at my dad's house and saw it. And it had to do with the per diem increasing, which we were all kind of surprised because no one had received any type of notification. So we reached out to DMAPs where the conversation, basically, they told us that they don't have to notify us. And they also claimed that there were several, several conversations during session and where they told folks that the rate was going up. Our belief is that they didn't tell anyone the rate was going up. They were telling people that the cap was going to expire. According to the legislation, they don't have to increase the per diem. So we had a call with them yesterday and there seems to be a lot of confusion about whose responsibility it is to notify counties. We asked the question in the past when the per diem rate was changed because apparently the calculation is done by the state budget office. And when we asked who was responsible for the notification and who took care of that in the past, no one seemed to be able to answer that question. So I think that these are some remnants. When the bill was passed in 2018, that created DMAPs and did this entire reorganization of military affairs and public safety. This is something that just was never worked out apparently. And so there is, and it just so happened that last month Senator Woodrum had submitted a request to have an interim meeting dealing with regional jails, to have a conversation about some comprehensive reforms and changes to the regional jail system. And because of the fact that counties pay the jail bill for everyone else participating. So there is a meeting on Tuesday at 11:00 AM. It's our understanding, I had a phone call about an hour and a half ago, it's our understanding that this may just get addressed through an appropriation from the budget surplus that's coming in right now. Because our understanding is, is that DMAP says that they need the money. That's why they wanted to increase the per diem. So they may be able to address this through some sort of appropriation that for the next year will keep the per diem at its current level. We have also asked, one of the main reasons we were upset also was because counties have already submitted and approved their budgets. And you can't ask them to absorb a 14% increase in 27 days when the new fiscal year starts. So we are hoping that we're going to have some conversations about how this process occurs so we can communicate with all of our counties and get that information back to you also in the future. We don't have this issue again. So we're, we're hoping that there's going to be, there's going to be some, some good movement on Tuesday of getting that addressed. My last thing, and then I swear I'll quit talking. I brought a copy. This is the latest FAQ information from NACO regarding ARP funds. This was updated on May 24th. It just gives some basic information on what you can and can't spend your money on. There are some key dates there on that front page. Right now, they are going through a public comment period regarding the interim rule and you can submit those comments through July 9th. We have told folks, if you have issues like, for example, one issue going on right now is you cannot use any of the monies as matching funds. So I know that Senator Manchin's office has had discussions with Treasury about that. They're going to see if they can work something out with them. But if there's anything in here that you all have, have issue with, you can contact our office or you can contact Andrew Robinson in Senator Manchin's office. Because they are having constant conversations with Treasury on things of that nature. We're also working in conjunction with the Auditor's Office. We have some counties who are completely independent and on their own and they can handle everything. And then we have some counties that need a lot of help. So we are partnering with them and then actually right now, we're in the process of gathering how many counties have actually applied and received their funds. The main thing that we want to reiterate to counties is you don't have to spend your money right now. There is time to take a step back and look at what you really want to spend it on specifically with, if there's another infrastructure package that comes in because there will be probably a lot of dollars there for water and sewer and things of that nature. The other thing to keep in mind with this, and this is going to be interesting, when the CARES Act money came in, it went to the state. They had full authority on how those dollars were spent. Because there was a bill passed this year, it was House Bill 2014. It now limits the state on how much money they are allowed to spend. They only get, I think it's 150 million. They can use that money how they see fit. The rest of the money has to be appropriated by the legislature. So you will probably start getting a lot of questions and things from your local electeds because probably folks are going to be putting in different projects that they want to see done. We also worked on compiling a list. We, we worked with all the regional councils and tried to put together a list of projects throughout the state that were infrastructure related. I would venture to say about 90% of them were water and sewer related. And so we are definitely, you know, trying to work on that. And again, you know, they, they are emphasizing cooperations. They want counties to talk to cities because you've got some counties and some cities that aren't going to receive enough money to do anything with infrastructure wise. So any opportunity that you have to partner, we're emphasizing that as well.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
Oh, you're welcome. I've been up here about six times in the past two months.
All right, next title on the agenda, information presentation for the CERT team. Cindy, if you would.
The president was trying to be here, he had planned a little bit, something come up and he could not have come. So I'm very familiar with this. We've started the CERT team February 2018 in the Glady, Bemis area. This packet is basically their bylaws, their procedural information. The one thing I do need to add into this is how they're reporting accident on the procedure piece of it. Okay, so they had a vehicle donated to them. And do you want me to go through the whole?
Yes.
Okay. They had a vehicle donated to them and there's very limited funds to fund the CERT team. Years ago, we had a very active CERT team here in the county and it was active for quite some time. We had a representative from the Red Cross that came in and he has since passed away. But when he was cleaning the Connex box out, he gave all of our CERT stuff to Gilmar, Lewis, Brockston County. And we don't know why. Shortly thereafter is when he passed away, so we really never got to ask him. But anyway, they started with zero. Their donations, they've come up with about $9,000 with hot dog sales and whatnot. So obviously, they don't have enough money to pay the insurance and the license and things like that for the vehicle. This is a national program and basically what they do is they, if somebody would call an 1 in the Glady, Bemis area, say that their house is on fire, this has actually happened, they can, they had water extinguishers and fire extinguishers. So they took those and was able to minimize the damage done. Now, the trailer itself burned up, but the three that was ripe trailer itself burned up, but the three that was right beside of it, they kept those wet enough that the exposures didn't have any damage. So potentially, they could have lost four, and they just lost the one. So, right there itself, I mean, it was a huge, huge help. Another thing, it takes the ambulance about 20 minutes to get there. The roads aren't that great, it is out there. They've had cardiac arrest there, they was able to do CPR on the person until the ambulance got there. So you have trained individuals. During the train accident, there were several of the people around there, they went and helped, and that was years and years ago. That's the reason why they wanted to join the CERT. We've had people fall and break an ankle jumping off the bridge into the water. They were able to get them out of water. They did two water rescues, they search and rescue. And these people are all volunteers, and they meet once a month. Let me think, what else? The, the one big thing about it is the vehicle, one, if everybody takes their private vehicle, in Rockingham, I mean, I've been an emergency responder for 38 years, if everybody takes their vehicle to the scene, it congests so bad, you can't get fire truck, ambulance, police car in there. So, and these are very narrow routes to begin with, so you're limiting that down to one vehicle instead of six. The other thing is, they are volunteers, there's no compensation for them at all. So instead of the wear and tear on their vehicle and their fuel, they can just use the one vehicle. So, the CERT team would be paying for the fuel and the maintenance on the, on the truck. What they're asking the county to do is tag it, the license tag, and put them on the fleet insurance. And again, they've worked through my office, through the emergency management. This is, like I said, a national program, it's homeland security. So it kind of trickles down to me, and then it would work under that. What I've used for it in the past, they're the only volunteers I really have in the county, other than my fire department. So, we've had episodes where they went over to Harmon, and used some pumps to pump out basements during the flood. They worked every day of the flood, multiple of the CERT team members cleaning basements, feeding people, getting garbage, I mean, for no compensation at all, of course. And they're just good people, they just want to help. And they don't want to limit it just to Glady-Beemis, they want to be able to help everybody in Randolph County that they can. So if I need things taken to Valley Head or Pickens, one, it's not really fair for them to have to drive their vehicle clear down there, and I can't let them use one of mine. So with that vehicle being there, they would be able to leave my staff where they're at, and they could run and do errands during a disaster. And that's the only time that we would use them, is during a disaster.
So the question I think we had was like, where's it going to be kept at, who's going to be driving it?
Yep.
Just for the law of the law purposes.
The application that you see here, that you guys have, the application, it has to come through my, our office. We do a criminal background check on them, and then we do a driving history on them to make sure, one, that there are no reason why we should guess it. Then, once, and then, it has to go to their presence, so there are steps in the chain here. Once we get this, I will bring it to you. Once everything's approved or denied, we would give it to you, and that way you could see who all is being able to drive this. We, we tossed around several ideas about where it was going to be housed, and we came up with the Old Digger place, and it's, if you go right across the bridge, it's the first place right there on the right. There are video cameras, so we have access to go back and look at them if we need to. And because it is sensitive information, if you would look where the tab is down, and your paper in your pocket. I think it's, I'm going to say five maybe? It's on four. Four and five. And, okay, do you see it there?
Yes.
Okay, it's the housing of the county tag vehicle. And again, with it being sensitive information, I just want to share this with you, that we can have this packet, that it would be secure that way. And another thing they have done, the local fire departments in that area, the, the fire departments that would respond, they also have the combination lock to that trailer. And say if they get there and they needed a backboard, that if something really bad, that they could have access to it, the trailer. So, they wouldn't have access to the locks inside, you know, but they would have access to the trailer. So, we've secured it that way. The last sheet on your packet is a log, and the ending mileage should always be the beginning mileage of the next time it's out. They have to turn that into me once a month. So I will verify that they actually had a call. So, it says time in, time out, mileage start, mileage end. So we can verify that way that they were actually on a call per se in their community, or if they went out. And if it doesn't match, we'll investigate it and see, did they need to go get fuel? Was there something going on that I wasn't aware of? And then if we can't match it up, then we will contact Rob and, and have Rob to come over and, and see what's going on. So we went to every extent we could to make sure that it was, it was safe, it was secure, that it's there for them to be able to use it.
Then we'll definitely need this, the document, this paper here back, just for we need to get a hold of the insurance, kind of let them know.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And what I have put in the policy, anything that's sensitive information will be blacked out.
That's fine.
So their social, their driver's license, and anything that comes out of weapons I can't share on paper, I can tell you that they're clear, or, or I denied it for X reason, but I cannot give it to you.
And once you get approval, we just need to know.
Absolutely, yes. And I thought if I just give you the paper, then you know who always went through this, and there was a chain followed.
All right.
Okay?
Any other questions? All right, this time we'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I move that we approve the request to insure and license a 2,000 Toyota truck for the CERT team in Glady-Beemis.
All right, motion on the floor is to authorize the licensing and acquisition of this 20, a 2,000 Toyota truck for the use of the CERT team for Glady-Beemis. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
All right, next item on the agenda is consider approval of lease agreement with the West Virginia Division of Natural Resources. Chris, you want to talk about this? This was one that you brought to, to us.
Yeah, this is, actually where it is, is you have Georgetown Road going toward Beverly, out past Spillway, maybe a mile. There used to be a house there, and it got flooded several times, about eight, roughly eight, nine years ago, FEMA bought it out and tore the house down. It's just been sitting there empty, it's right along the river. And been thinking of what we could use it for, and a few years ago, we thought about maybe putting a boat ramp in, and everything went sort of crazy. But, so me and Mark, and who else was, Jeff Crash, we met DNR after back in, back in the winter, was it? And they come out and looked at it and see if they'd be interested in putting in a boat ramp, and they said, we got a letter back, said they would have to lease the property from us, which we said was okay. So we finally got a lease agreement, they're, they're interested in putting the boat ramp out there, so everybody can go out, put your boat in the river, because you can't get up to Beverly hardly anymore. Malcolm's Beverly, there's nowhere to put a boat in water, and a lot of people have been asked about it. So, that's what it is, we've been working, been working on that.
Great thing about it is the DNR's kind of going with...
No cost to the county.
Exactly. They're going to put it in, and they will, they will...
Now, we may have to do some upkeep, that's about it, mow it and whatnot, but that's...
But other than that, I mean, this is an opportunity, like you said, currently, th- this is two lots that are side by side. Well, two doors down is another lot, and currently that's being, there's a little slip off to the, on the left-hand corner of that lot, that's not any wider than this diasthere. And they're using that now to put the boats in, and it's, you're not able to use it for any large-sized boats or anything. But this would open up and give an opportunity. We've heard a lot of good feedback from people saying this is, would be great. It's, it's all deep water, so you can, you drop your, drop your boats down. So, so this time we'll entertain a motion that we...
Okay, I move that we approve lease agreement with the West Virginia Division of Natural Resources for a boat ramp on Georgetown Road.
All right, motion on the floor is to agree, to approve a lease agreement between the Randolph County Commission and the Department of Natural Resources for use of two lots for a boat ramp. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I want to pay check for Cindy, home for the flood plane, I guess it doesn't...
Yeah, it doesn't matter, since they're not going to be...
No building.
You put buildings, exactly. If you put buildings there, it would be an issue. Good to see you, Mary, take care.
Actually, I have one halibut, Mark, real quick. The community keg walks start tomorrow night at 6 o'clock downtown, at the old Citizens Bank Park and that, so good to see you guys.
All right, thank you.
You bake a cake?
Hey, Jerry, do you bake a cake?
Do you bake a cake?
No.
I know where you can get one.
All right, next item on the agenda is consider donation to Randolph County Recreation Board for Roof Replacement Project. All right, this is a project that, that has been going for a while with the 4H camp, and they have, they've got the roof on the, the, yeah, the main building, it's the kitchen, it's got the kitchen, all that. It's been, it's been needing repaired, replaced, and they've received a federal grant to do this for $40,000. In addition, we had approved $5,000 to go towards that. They felt that was going to be enough, until they realized with it being a federal grant, that they have to use the federal wage requirement.
Paying wages, yeah.
Yes. And so as a result, it's, it's caused the, the project to be significantly larger. It's leaving them a shortfall of $17,209. But this is something that really needs to be done for the building. Andy, you're out there a lot, so you can speak to, to that as far as the condition is at.
Absolutely. I was just out there yesterday, actually, and we found a new leak in the, in the dining hall. The leaks have been mainly in the assembly hall, but they're kind of everywhere now. It just keeps getting worse. It definitely needs completely replaced, and we have a bid for that, so.
Okay, all right.
Is that a flat roof?
No.
No?
No.
It's like, it's an, but it's amazing, it's not anything like...
Okay.
Terrible.
Couldn't remember.
All right, I make a motion that we approve 17,209 to, to be used for the project, 4H, for new gutters, roof, to be out, gutters and surrounding a project. Total cost of that project is $62,209. So we'll give 17,209 out of courthouse contraction.
That'll be in addition to the 5,000 that we've already done. So with the motion on the floor to approve 17,209 to complete the project for new gutters, spout, and new roof. So, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consider approval for new higher north central community corrections. You're up again, Erin. Thank you for your patience.
So, I have gotten ahold of you all, as well as our, as well as the board, while I was on vacation. Alexis had put her two weeks notice in. Today is actually her last day, as well as her birthday, which is why I thought, what I did, because that's what she wanted. So, I frantically tried to get things put in place, and tried to get resumes and interviews, and I got it done. So, we did put it in the paper that following week, and I had resumes turned in, and I did interviews on Tuesday with the judge and the chief probation officer, and of those interviews, we did select Kimberly Collins. She, I actually was very happy, her resume is, she's got a bachelor's in criminal justice, she's interned with the State Police, she's interned at the regional jail, she's currently employed with the Elkins Mountain School. So she, I really believe she's going to be a very good fit for our office. So, my request is to have her begin as the DRC assistant on June 17, with a wage of 22,500 with the full benefits, but she will also be on a 90-day probationary period from that point on, for 90 days. And she will be taken out of O72, which is where the current salary is coming out of.
Okay, all right. This time we'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion that we approve the hiring of Kimberly Collins for North Central Community Corrections as a full-time DRC assistant, starting June 17, a wage of 22,500, full benefits, with a 90-day probationary period.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve the hiring of Kimberly Collins to North Central Community Corrections as a full-time DRC assistant with the, starting the 17th June 2021. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
How long was the other girl there?
Alexis? No, actually, I haven't even had Alexis for a year.
Oh, geez.
So, I did have Melissa before her, I had her for a couple of years. I actually messaged Melissa and asked her if she wanted to come back, but she lives in Tennessee.
She didn't reply back.
She did, she did, but she lives in Tennessee. So, she told me she's coming back in five years. It's not been five years.
All right. All right, Erin, thanks. Okay, next, consider appointment to the Pioneer Memorial Public Library Board. All right, we have a motion.
Is this a reappointment?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I move that we approve reappearance of Kristen Teeter to Pioneer Public Library Board for a term of five years. And let's see, the term now expires June 30, 2021, so this is a reappearance for five years.
All right, motion on the floor is to, to reapprove the appointment. We received a letter of interest from, from Kristen, saying she'd like to do it again. Also, we have the letter from the Pioneer Memorial Public Library recommending. So, motion on the floor is to approve Kristen Teeter for a new five-year term, beginning July 1, 2021. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is sheriff, consider approval of provincial resource officer grant application for the Randolph County Sheriff's Office. Would you like to, to speak to this?
Sure, this is something that I've been working on for a little while, and of course, discussion with you guys and with the Board of Education. And it looks like we've got this grant package prepared. We've asked for two officers. I would like to assign one to Elkins Middle School, either as base, as baseball operation, or one at Tiger Valley High Middle. And the way the grant's being written, the officer, officers would be able to go to every school in Randolph County, even, even our grade school level, for education purposes, things like that. And it's, it looks like by talking with the board, they're, they're very much in favor of this program. They've reached out monetarily and have asked, have basically said that they would provide salaries for two, two officers to do that. And they actually kind of is interested in three, and I don't know that I have the staff. It takes someone that has certification, law enforcement certification, has to be one of the qualifiers for one of these officers. You can't take a new guy and put him through the academy and send him into a school. So... So, um, I, I kind of put feelers out in, in my ranks, and I had, uh, only two people, honestly, out that are interested. And so I, I, I couldn't fund it, I couldn't provide it to third person at this point. But, uh, lots of talks, lots, lots of negotiation with it, uh, talked with the grant people, and, uh, it's due tomorrow. So I may be driving to Charleston, you know, first thing in the morning to hand deliver that. And, uh, I would appreciate if you guys would approve it. I think it's good for our kids, uh, I think it'll be good for the, the teachers and the staff, it's a safety level in the schools, uh, and an educational opportunity to be able to counsel with the kids and, and work with them. So it's, it's a good program, it's been going on for years and years and years across the state. Randolph County has not participated since Deputy Dyer was in the school years and years ago, I'm, I look at, majesty Dyer. But he was one of the only ones ever to do that in this, in this county.
I was in high school, Deputy Dyer was our deputy.
Yeah, yeah, people still remember that, uh, he had a lot of impact with, with the kids, uh, you know, and, uh, she's obviously an example of that.
Membership, man.
And, uh, so we, we would like to, uh, to kick this program off again in Randolph County, and it sounds like we've got, um, players and, and, and the board and people that are, are really, they're ready for this, they're, they're excited about it, so...
So the Board of Education could cover the salary and benefit package?
Yes, it's, it's all written into the, into the grant package, you can, uh, if you review that, or, uh, you can go back and see, see how it's, yeah, you can see how it breaks down, um, and, uh...
Commission's going to supply the vehicles and the training?
We're going to, the, the commission will provide the vehicles, training certifications for the officers. And with, with me pulling out of the ranks to put it, put them in the school, it kind of opens us up a couple of spots where we can bring some, some new guys in, um, off our list, and, uh, so it doesn't affect our twenty-four-hour coverage and for protecting the citizens out, out in the county, so...
This is truly partnership between the county and the Board of Education, because, um, you know, we're, we're, we're chipping in some, they're chipping in some, and, uh, you, they agreed to, uh, to fund an officer for, or two officers for three years, so...
When there's no school, they just be doing their regular deputy work.
When, when there's no school, and, and that's, that's part of the, uh, the negotiation and, and part of the talk is, if, if I need these guys, if there was a, a, a major incident in Randolph County, uh, those guys won't go to that school that day. They're going to come out and assist in, in, in the county, um, wherever they're needed. Uh, if, if a deputy is driving to Mill Creek, uh, to his duty station, and he comes up on a car wreck, he's most likely just going to go ahead and work that car wreck and take care of it, and then go on to the school, so that we're not running somebody else out there when he's, when he's going by it in the first place. So there's, there, there's things in place like that to, for, to take care of, uh, little incidents like that. And, uh, I think it's, it's a great partnership between the county and the board.
Oh, yeah, I think it'd be great.
You know, during the summertime, having an additional two deputies when it's busy with all the tourism traffic and things.
Yes, and that, that, that's one thing I'm excited about is, um, the week of Thanksgiving, when schools shut down, um, these, these guys can be out on patrols and protecting the county, uh, until school kicks back in, and then they go back to the school. So it, it, it has a lot of benefits that way.
Okay. Any other questions?
For everyone.
Discussion, absolutely, agree. All right, so at this time we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the provincial, uh, resource officer grant application for Randolph County Sheriff's Office.
All right, motion on the floor is to give the signature on the grant application for the, uh, the pro grant program with the, uh, Randolph County Sheriff's Office and the Board of Education, County Commission. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sounds like you're dropping trouble.
Yeah.
All right, next item on the agenda. Yes, sir. Is consider ratifying signature or letter support for the Midland PSD Water Project? If you all recall, at the last meeting, we had, uh, had approved, um, the signature on a letter of support for a, uh, water project, water line extension project for Midland Public Service District that went to Senator Manchin's office. This is the, essentially the same letter that, uh, sent to, um, Senator Capto's office, and so at this time I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the ratifying of the signature.
Make a motion to approve, uh, the ratification of the signature on the letter of support for the Midland, uh, PSD Water Project.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve the ratification of the signature on the letter of support for Midland Public Service District Water Project. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is consider authorization of signature for coronavirus fiscal recovery funds. This was, uh, mentioned earlier, uh, when, um, we were, Jennifer was giving our presentation regarding the, uh, the funds. This is the actual, the, the s- steps of the process to receive the funds from the American Rescue Plan is, the first thing is we have to do an application, that application requires the naming of a fiscal agent, and it also requires the signature of the Randolph County Commission. And once that happens, then we will be able to go in and make a request for funds, and then those funds will be sent. Half the funds will be sent this year, half of them will be sent for another year. We do have, as Jennifer mentioned, we have until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four in order to use those funds. So, you know, we're, we're still prioritizing, as the mayor mentioned, they're doing the same for the city as far as projects are concerned, because there is other money that's going to be available for infrastructure. We want to know what all is coming through the pike, uh, so that we'll be able to best utilize the, the funding that we receive from the, from the ARC program. But at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the signature on the application for funds for, from the ARC program.
I'll move, yeah, I'll move that we approve the signature for coronavirus fiscal recovery funds.
All right, motion on the floor.
What is it, an amount of two point eight million, I think?
Yeah, I think the first draw, so not quite, uh, yeah, it's, it's around five point six million total, which half of it comes now. So, uh, motion on the floor is to approve the, uh, authorization for the signature of the coronavirus fiscal funds, recovery funds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, final settlements and annual accountings. Erin, thank you very much, have a great day.
Motion to approve the seven final settlements as presented.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve settle, seven final settlements as presented, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. But revisions. Got several of them, this is the last meeting for, for us to approve the revisions, so we've got, got several. First one we have is from the sheriff's office, this is the in-house budget revision, uh, so...
Make a motion that we approve the in-house budget revision for the sheriff in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve the in-house budget revision for, um, TF equipment, correct, sheriff?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, uh, for thirty-five hundred dollars, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we have a state budget revision of the sheriff's office.
Do you do that one?
No, we do a roll call, that's what you do in the motion.
I make a motion that we approve the state budget revision for the sheriff, increasing, what's the total? Uh, two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-seven cents.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve the state budget revision moving money to, uh, of, in the amount of twenty-five hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-seven cents for the, uh, Process Services Department. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, um, Commissioner C?
Aye.
Commissioner Keeslin?
Aye.
Commissioner Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Since I think this is the last meeting we do, it, in, uh, we can do in-house, can we do in-house next meeting?
Maybe it was, yeah, for state. Yeah, we do in-house in, correct. All right, uh, next is a in-house budget revision for toll warden.
Make a motion we approve the in-house budget revision for the dog warden. Um, looks like ten thousand, no, five, one thousand, uh, sixty-three dollars.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve the budget revision for one thousand, sixty-three dollars for the in-house for dog warden. And what this is, is we're, we're moving funds, if you all recall, we, we hired a part-time person to cover for, uh, our dog warden, and so we've got money and contractual services we won't be using, we're going to move that over to, to the weight.
Get us to the first year.
Yep, get us to the first year, and we'll go from there, all right? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is, um, state budget revision for, um, for insurance line items, so at this time we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the state budget revision in the amount of three hundred and eight dollars and forty cents, that's for insurance purchases.
Yep, for process serving. All right, motion on the floor is to approve the state budget revision as presented, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Commissioner C?
Aye.
Commissioner Keeslin?
Aye.
Commissioner Scott?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, next one is state budget revision on the floor, Jake.
Okay, I move that we approve the state budget revision for jail in the amount of six thousand, nine hundred dollars.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve state budget revision for the jail for the amount of sixty-nine hundred dollars. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Commissioner C?
Aye.
Commissioner Keeslin?
Aye.
Commissioner Scott?
Aye.
Motion passes, all right? Next, division of properties, erroneous assessments.
Make a motion that we approve the thirteen exonerations as presented.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve thirteen erroneous assessments as submitted, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, distressed properties, we have no distressed properties this time, fire fee adjustments.
Six.
Six. I move that we approve the six fire fee adjustments as submitted.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve the six fire fee adjustments as submitted, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, table the bills.